Order, and if you haven't had a chance to look at the minutes, please do that. And, uh, once we... everybody has a chance to take a look at them, then I would be looking for a motion.
Second, is there... are there any comments, questions? Oh, go ahead.
I'm just under the... Yeah. Number one, number two, where I stress my opinion. Number two, any timber harvesting that occurs in the resource protection district surely into a little Ospey River zone. So if you add resource protection into number two.
Okay. Taking that into account as a change. All those in favors of the amended minutes? All opposed? Good. Okay, Link, you're on tonight. Yoli's not here. Um, we'll see if we... there's gonna be any votes or not, we'll see. But, uh, that's where that is. Alright, so the minutes are approved. We're gonna slide into new business, which I think really is old business, because I think we have seen Matt before talking about this particular gravel pit. And, um, Matt, why don't you jump in there?
Okay. Um, so yes, I'm back. Um, and we've... the first time I was here, um, I know we were kinda talking about some of the proposed plans, and we were talking about, um, what we were... some of the things that we were considering doing for Free Rivers Land Trust. Um, and we're still having those conversations. It's kinda like Carl's here tonight, um, with Free Rivers Land Trust. We actually submitted an application with the state today, um, which is going in, and we're really hoping that the deal works out with them. I'll talk a little bit more about the deal in a few minutes here. But, for now, um, our, our plan at the moment is to try to get this gravel pit approved. As some of you know, we already have this 35-acre piece down here, um, approved currently. And, um, I'm gonna talk more about what else we're trying to look to get approved. But, in general, um, we're trying to get the rest of the land approved for gravel extraction to use right now for a few reasons. The first reason is, um, so that we have the land approved, just in case the laws change or anything like that in the future. Um, we've got the land approved for, for our business's use in coming years. Um, and the other reason is, is that by getting the land approved, um, if the deal ends up working out with Free Rivers Land Trust, and we end up getting funding from the state, we'll have a clear idea of how this project with the land trust will be funded, because we'll be able to tell the state, okay, this gravel is approved for use through the town. So if, essentially, if you're gonna... if the land trust is gonna come in, and they're gonna take some of the land, they're gonna take some of the gravel, we'll be able to tell them exactly what it's worth, and we're gonna go... we'll know we'll be compensated for it. Um, so, I'm, you know, I'd be lying if I said we were trying to get this approved just for the land trust, because if, if things don't work out with the land trust, then we're doing it for our own sake. But, um, we're, we all are also here to try to get it approved for the sake of the possible, possible potential of this deal. So, if you're looking at this map right here, as I mentioned, there's a 35-acre piece that was already approved, and we haven't really done a lot of, um, work in there yet. I think we probably have about 10 acres opened up right now, and we were in there, um, we were using this location for, um, about, I think it was eight, about eight years ago we were in there, and it was supplying a lot of that agri pit for, um, concrete company in Sanford. But, we since then left, we haven't been doing much there, because we had the opportunity to get some material a bit closer, um, that what we call our agri pit, which is quite a place to do. Um, that should be... we should be there for probably another four or five years, and then I would think that we'd be interested in coming back up here at that point. Um, so there's really not much going on in this location right now, and there kinda won't be for another five years or so, um, before we get back up here. Um, but what we're looking to try to do is, the whole property is 350 acres, and as you can see, there's kind of a lot of sensitive areas. We've got Hanson Pond, and there's, um, these wetlands here. Um, and I'll kinda talk about some of the restrictions, uh, a little bit more as we go along, but, um, what we're looking to try to get approved is, um, I've labeled these... this is CRD1, this is, um, an area that directly abuts the existing gravel pit. Um, CRD2 is a, kind of another sliver here that we could additionally get approved. Um, CRD4 is another piece that we can get approved. These areas in green are actually in resource protection areas, which is kind of active. Um, so when we originally bought the property, these resource protection areas didn't exist. And, since we bought the property, the town has, um, put these resource protection districts into play, so it's kinda changed things for us quite a bit, and it's made things more challenging out here for us. Um, but it's, it's something that we wanna try to, try to work with. So the areas in green are in resource protection, um, the areas in yellow are in resource protection, but they're also within, uh, the 750-foot Little Ospey River setback. So the setback kind of goes along over, um, right here from the Ospey River. And so the gray areas would be... the gray and yellow areas would be in the 750-foot offset, but the yellow areas are within that offset, and they're also in the resource protection district as well.
What's the dotted line going down through there?
I'm not sure what that is.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah. I'm not sure what that is, to be honest. I'm gonna have to ask the, uh, tractor, I suppose. I'm not sure if those... Yeah. Do you wanna go to the, um, cycling camp? So, a lot of crazy stuff going on, um...
Not including...
Here, I don't know if you tell...
If the river's right there.
The green, the green line is in 750-foot offset from the Ospey.
Little intrusions like this must...
This must be zoned in a more sensitive way or something. We've had studies done, um, along the river to identify where the floodplain is, and some bagot techniques went in to identify where that is, so we know exactly where the edge of the 100-year floodplains is, and we'd be 75 feet away from the edge of the floodplain. Um, but we also have to do, um, along the river here, there's a lot of consideration. We also need to do 100 feet of high water mark on the river as well. And that is requiring the Saco River Corridor Commission. I'm not sure if that's, kinda dealt with that approved before, but Saco River Corridor Commission, um, has control over 500 feet along the Ospey River. So, with the town, I'm planning on trying to get approved to go up to 100 feet, even 100 feet of the floodplain of the Little Ospey River. Um, I can get that approved through the town, but I still need to go through the Saco River Corridor Commission to be anywhere within 500 feet of the Ospey River. So, I'll have to get an additional approval through them to come, to, to be able to extract material close to the river. Um, and that is the purple line that you see here, is the 500-foot offset for Saco River Corridor. Um, basically, I... there's a lot of offsets here. Um, I know it's a little bit confusing. The other thing that you're seeing is, this blue line here is, it's a National Resource Protection inland waterfowl and wading bird habitat. Um, so we have to stay 250 feet away from this wetland and from Hanson Pond. Um, so typically, the DEP would require about 100 foot, 75-foot setback here, but this is a 250-foot setback, because it's a, um, special bird habitat. Um, so if you, um, once again, I know it's, it's pretty confusing, but, um, it's been professionally done by engineers, and they've come up with these shaded areas, which is where we actually be permitted to, um, take material from. And, what our hopes are with this property is that the areas in gray down here, um, we want to be approved to use for, for regular use. So that would be this area, the area that's already approved, and that would be this area here. So that means it would just be like a regular gravel pit where we go in, we, um, process material and take out materials we need to. Um, there are limitations on the rules for these resource protection areas and for this 750-foot offset. And the limitations are that, with a, in the, in the, um, I guess in the code book, that, or through the ordinance, is that you can only take out 10,000 cubic yards of material a year from these resource protection areas and from within that 750-foot offset. So, my hope with the, with the town is to try to get approved in these areas to be able to remove 10,000 cubic yards a year from those areas. And, to give you an idea of what that looks like, um, me and Ken kinda looked at the numbers the other day, and it was, if it was only six feet high that you were taking out, then that would be about a one-acre area that you, that you took out to get 10,000 yards a year. Um, so you, you know, a lot of times, these, these pits will definitely be deeper than six feet. Um, the other number I had was, if it's about 25 feet tall, then it'd be about 100 by 100 area, which I think is more or less what you're gonna see out there, is probably about 20 to 30 feet high, um, as, as far as, um, your extraction heights. Um, so it's about a 100 by 100 area, and that would be a yearly thing where you could go in, and we would take the material from there, and we would possibly process the material with like a screener, and we would take out just 10,000 yards of cobble, um, just the rock, because it's more valuable to us, and we would leave the sand there and use the sand to reclaim with. Um, and what I'm, what I'm looking for is to try to get approved for 10,000 yards a year out of the resource protection areas and 10,000 yards a year out of the Little Ospey River zoning areas. So to be able to take a total of 20,000 yards a year out of those two respective areas. So, that would mean that, um, in the green areas, that we would take out 10,000 yards a year, and then in the gray areas that you see kind of up towards the river, we would take another 10,000 yards a year. Um, and it's really important for us to be able to do that for a few reasons beyond... One of the reasons is, is that when we originally bought this property, we thought that all those areas in green, we would be able to get the material at a regular rate when we purchased the property. Because the laws changed, that really changed the law for us, and the property really isn't worth... this isn't as valuable or it isn't worth as much as it was when we first bought it, because of these changes in the law. Um, these areas in brown are, are where the law actually changed, and the, and the resource protection areas were, were included. Um, so you can see kind of how, you know, all the areas that we once thought we'd be able to use as a sort of regular operation that are, are very limited in use now. Um, as far as access to those areas, there's a, an existing, you can vaguely see it here, logging road that goes up through here, and it goes around here, and goes to the back over here. So we would use that logging road to take the material out, we would bring it down into the pit here, and we would likely process it further, um, down here in the gravel pit. Or we would just slowly take it out of these areas, um, over the years. Um, and, uh, so the logging road, we've been approved through the main department of document protection to use it, um, and we've also had kind of some discussions with the town about using it as well. As long as we don't widen the road, if there's two areas where there's some culverts and it kinda goes through somewhat sensitive areas, as long as we don't widen the road, the DEP tells me that it'll be fine to use it. We can, we can put some gravel down on top of it and kinda fix it up a little bit, but we can't widen, can't widen it at all, especially where those culverts are, um, which isn't an issue for us. It, it's wide enough to have trucks, you know, kinda moving up and down, um, through it. So, um, we have spoken with this landowner about trying to, instead of using the logging road, about trying to go through his property and coming in the back up here, um, but he really didn't have any interest in, in doing that. He didn't wanna have a right of way through his property, um, just in case he decides to have future plans with it.
So, that's the existing pit right there.
Yes.
How many acres did you say you think you have open there?
I think I probably have about 10 acres open right now.
So anything that's not buffer is out of the resource protection, anything with the buffer is the sensitive areas?
Is the sensitive areas. And then these green spots you're seeing are also, are within the 750-foot Little Ospey River setback. And that setback did exist when we purchased the land, so we, we knew about that setback. Um, the resource protection areas were something new that came into place. So we've gone in and, um, we've done a lot of work out here to get all these plans put together. Um, this is the monitoring well plan, um, that Esteban and Paul did, and they got a little crazy the first time around when they were doing this pit, and they put in a tremendous amount of wells, so we have a very clear idea of where the groundwater heights are. They've since gone back and they put in these additional wells.
I think the three-digit were new and the two-digit, the two-digit were the older, one of two digits.
Yes, the three digits were the new ones. And, this was all done by engineers that really understand groundwater hydrology and understand the best place to put these wells, to understand, um, you know, where the groundwater heights are at. Um, all of the, the reclamation plan that I show you is based on the information that they got about groundwater heights in these wells. So, um, our plan is to stay... the, the rules are that you have to stay five feet above the highest recorded groundwater height. Um, we're gonna stay six feet above, um, to begin with, just to have a safe buffer in case, and, um, you know, may, I, I would imagine how dry it's been this summer that these levels are probably pretty low. Um, but the engineers seem to assure me that even if it started to rain like crazy, that, that those heights shouldn't raise more than a foot. Um, if they, they, you know, over the course of that whole entire big area, really shouldn't, you shouldn't see more than a foot of rise. So, by keeping a six-foot buffer, um, it kinda protects us a little bit, just in case that the well heights do raise. Um, this is the reclamation plan, and it's, um, tough to look at, but it shows the, the grading that will be required when we're done taking the material out. Um, all the, around all the perimeters here, they'll have to be, um, three and a half to one sloping. They'll have to be, um, the entire area, not just the slope area, but also the, the flat floor of the gravel pit that we leave will need to be, um, completely loamed and seeded, um, reclaimed, and we have a lot of experience with that. Um, even here in Acton, um, my uncle Rudy Pepins right off of West Door Drive, and he, um, he kinda lives where we, we used to operate a gravel pit over there, and, uh, he's got... we've reclaimed that, a good section of that whole entire pit, and we've got beautiful pine trees growing and stuff. Um, and you can see the same thing in our agri pit, that we do take the reclamation work, and we're done digging the material out very seriously, and we're trying to make it as, it look as good as possible. Um, so, we're right in this area right now operating, and probably have about 10 acres open. Um, what I'm gonna be trying to get approved through the board, um, is that to be able to open up 19 acres, um, at one time, which just gives us a little bit more breathing room. Um, it's such a big piece of property that it'd be nice to have the additional acreage, especially if we have to sort of haul material from these locations down into the lower part of the pit and find an area to stockpile that material.
Matt, is that 19 additional, or is that from 10 to 19?
10 to 19.
Okay.
Yes. And, um, 19 is the, um, about the maximum that you can go with the DEP. I'd have to get a variance permit through the DEP to do that. And, with that variance permit, um, the 19 acres, the DEP requires that you're bonded, so it's a reclamation bond, essentially, and right now they have the rate at about, I think it's $3,800 an acre. So, that means that we have the 19 acres approved through DEP. If anything happened, if the, we went out of business, God forbid, or we, you know, we were bad people, or we abandoned the land, then the DEP has got this line of credit, um, this bond, basically, that we've set up with them, so that they can afford to pay to go in and reclaim the land if anything horrible were to happen. So, um, having the 19 acres helps us out, but it also in ways helps the town out, because it requires us to get bonded through the DEP, um, which is a, basically, um, an insurance that the land will get reclaimed, no matter what happens. So what, uh, Ken showing now is, this was the floodplain study of the town. Um, the maximum, um, height of the water will be in a, in a 100-year storm. So this is about the state of the 50 years. Um, we need to know this information, because we're 100 feet away from the floodplain. This shows the, the National Resource Protection Act, um, the bird habitat, which is located on site. So that area is all very restrictive. Um, and we, you know, we really like, um, this shows the, uh, shows the wetlands, um, identified by the town in green. And, one of my kind of make, like to make too, is that we really like people to use the land. Uh, there's a lot of people that, there's a snowmobile trail that goes through there, and there's a four-wheeled trail that goes through there. Um, we, we know people go back to Hanson Pond, and they canoe, and they kayak, and they like to go into Hanson Pond, you know, down to Little Ospey, and get them to Shapley Pond, and we really don't mind people using the land for that sort of purpose, um, that, you know, at this current time. I think if the deal went through with Free Rivers Land Trust, that, um, it would be a, a really great area for people around here to use recreationally, um, as well, and it would be a protected area. What else I wanna mention? Did it die?
No, I just cut it off when you were talking.
Is the, uh...
Yeah, I didn't have it on there.
Okay.
That would be a good thing to show.
Yep. So, um, this is the, the area in green is, this is the proposal that we put in to the state of Maine, and this would be the area that Free Rivers Land Trust takes. Um, so, this proposal actually went in today, um, and as you can see, if, if the deal worked out, that we would just operate in the areas where there's regular gravel pit here. Um, and the land trust would actually own all the land in green, um, but we would still have to work... We would likely offer the land up to the land trust after we were done, and then they could purchase it, and it would be an additional part of the property. Um, one thing that's, it, this deal is gonna kind of depend on in some ways is us getting approved to be able to get the material out of these upper areas, um, specifically to be able to get 20,000 yards of material out of these upper areas. Um, because when the land trust comes in to pay us for, um, the, the land and the material, the material will end up being a, um, a donation to the trust that we would give to them. And, this donation would, would basically just give us a tax credit, um, for our business as, as donating this resource to them. Um, but, in order to make it, it worthwhile to us, we need to be approved to get 20,000 yards of material out of these upper areas, um, so that when they will need to do, um, basically a financial audit report of what the land is worth, that we'll get compensated, um, close to what we think is, is the right amount. Um, if we were only approved to get, like, if we weren't approved to get into these areas, it wouldn't be, or if we were only approved to get, um, like, 10,000 yards a year out of these areas, there wouldn't be a big incentive for us to wanna sell it to the land trust, because they're only gonna pay us a certain amount for it, and it would be worth more for us to physically take the material out. Um, but if we can get approved for the 20,000, 20,000 yards a year, then it would make it more of an incentive with Free Rivers Land Trust for us to want to sell the land and donate the material rights. Um, I can talk more about that, it's kinda complicated, I mean, looking at the numbers and stuff, but, um, I, really, getting approved for the 20,000 yards is a big deal for our company, whether the land trust deal goes through or not. And, the reason behind that, as I mentioned, is because we paid a lot for this property before the laws changed, and to be able to get this material now is a really good deal. Um, and, so if it didn't go through the land trust, that'd be important, but if it does go through the land trust, it'd be important as well. And that's one of the, kind of the big things, I think, that, um, I'm gonna be trying to, trying to go after, is, is being able to get the 10,000 yards a year from the resource protection areas, and then separately from the 750-foot offset as well. So, Carl, did you wanna talk about the, the, the deal at all?
Yeah, I can mention a little bit. Um, the funding source for this is the MNFCP, which is Wetland Litigation Money. It's when a contractor destroys wetlands, they put money into a, a pool, that money has to be spent in the region where the wetlands were destroyed. So, presently, in southern Maine, there's quite a bit of construction going on, so there's a pretty good pool of money right now. One of the important parts of this proposal we put in is that it allows a working gravel pit to continue operation, but it also conserves some sensitive areas. It's not your typical conservation project, um, but we feel in this case that it's important that, for both of us, important for the Pepins, it's important for the, the conservation. We recently hired somebody from the Maine Natural Areas Program to come in and do an ecological study on this parcel, um, which I shared with, with Tom, which you all get to see. They spent a full day in there, two gals, checking the wildlife, the plants, birds, found lots of signs of wildlife in there, thought it was great habitat. We ran into somebody in there who was trapping beaver, I mean, people hunt in there, people snowmobile. It's definitely a parcel that, that has a lot of opportunities for people in the community, as well as, you know, the Little Ospey River, Hanson Pond. It's, it's pretty unique in that sense. It's a mile, just over a mile of waterfront edge on the Little Ospey River. Hanson Pond is 35 acres, is that right, 35?
Yeah.
Sorry, 35-acre pond. It does have one camp on it, if the land trust, which unfortunately, people have been vandalizing, if the land trust does get the property, we would take that camp down. It probably would become maybe a little picnic area or something like that. The land trust would put a walking trail in from the H Road for access in there, keep it separate, obviously, from the working gravel pit. So I think it would be, you know, a great asset for the town to, to have a property like this. And the land trust would, you know, we do pay, um, current use taxes in any property we own, so it's, it wouldn't come off the tax rolls. It's in tree growth now, some of it, um, and it would, it would remain, you know, working for us in our tree growth program.
Which, uh, we, we, yeah, we really do have a lot of hope that the, um, this deal, the land trust will go through, it'd be kind of a win for our business, and a, a win for the community, and for the environment, and, um, it's, it's definitely our hope that that happens. But, like I said, though, our, our first order of business is to try to get the land approved, so that we actually know what its value is or its value isn't. And, Carl, I think you'd said that during the ecological study, that they didn't find any endangered species, or anything of that nature, um, anything that would, you know, we would essentially...
It does have one camp on it, if the land trust, which unfortunately people have been vandalizing, if the land trust does get the property, we would take that camp down. It probably would become maybe a little picnic area or something like that. Land trust would put a walking trail in from the H Road for access in there, keep it separate, obviously, from the working gravel pit. So I think it would be, you know, a great asset for the town to, to have a property like this. And the land trust would, you know, we do pay current use taxes on any property we own, so it wouldn't come off the tax rolls. It's in tree growth now, some of it, and it would, it would remain, you know, working for us in our tree growth program.
Which I, we, yeah, we really do have a lot of hope that the, this deal, the land trust will go through, it would be kind of a win for our business and a win for the community and for the environment and it's definitely our hope that that happens. Like I said though, our first order of business is to try to get the land approved so that we actually know what its value is or its value isn't. Carl, I think you'd said that during the ecological study that they didn't find any endangered species or anything of that nature, anything that would, you know, we would essentially harm by being back there. And even though the, you know, one thing I guess I'd emphasize is that even though the, we'd be kind of coming into these sort of sensitive areas, you know, when you're near the wetlands and stuff, we still have the required buffers that we have to maintain to stay away from those areas and we'd only be taking out that, like I said, it'd be about 100 foot by 100 foot by 27 foot deep area every year. So it's not like we're going in there and opening up this whole area at once. We had like a small area where we took some stuff out. And so as far as being in, the mineral extraction thing taking place in these ecological sites are very, be a very, very slow process. At 20,000 yards a year, it would take us, I believe somewhere around 60 years to get everything out of there. So it would be a slow process where we took a little bit of material, then we reclaimed it, grew the grass back, took a little bit of material and just kind of hopped along and did that. It would be a very slow, long drawn out process, but that, we use, every year, the concrete facility, we use probably around 30, about 30,000 yards of concrete. So that 20,000 yards of material that we get is enough to supplement our business, 70% of our business, every year. So it doesn't sound like a lot of material, but it actually is a pretty big deal for our company because being able to get that material in years to come is going to be very important for us, for sure.
Matt, you were talking about trying to change these, those upper quadrants up there from 10,000 to 20,000. Are you including that, I guess it's eight, which is that Saco River area too? Or are you just going with seven and nine?
It would be seven, eight and nine. And so it would be, some of it would be within the Saco River Corridor Commission's jurisdiction, certainly. And to be clear, I'm not trying to ask to change the laws, I don't want to, you can't change the ordinances to allow for 20,000 yards a year. What I'm trying to get approved for, which would be 100% legal, is getting 10,000 yards a year from one restricted area, which is the resource protection area, and getting 10,000 yards a year from another restricted area, which is the Little Ospey River zoning district. So I'm not asking to change anything as far as the ordinances go. I'm just asking to get approved as the language states to be able to take 10,000 yards a year separately out of these two different areas. And what I would think is, if you look at your, Ken, do you mind pulling up the, maybe the first, the page labeled one again?
Is that the one?
Yes. So the way that would have to kind of work is that these are just resource protection, so we have to take 10,000 yards a year, for example, from like just here, and then we have to take 10,000 yards a year from within the 750, but not into the resource protection because we can't take more than, so we have to be in this gray area and this green area separately, which is how we essentially have to work. Did that answer your question? I know it's a bit confusing, yeah.
Well, it's all about interpretation there, if you're interpreting what the zoning ordinance says correctly. The 10,000 per year is per property, not per region of the property. You already have one permit for the existing pit and you'd have to get rid of that permit in order to apply for this 10,000 conditional use permit.
Why is that?
Because this, if you look in the zoning ordinance, under other uses, which is, I assume you came up with this, that's, if anyone else has a zoning ordinance, page 14. Filling grading or other earth moving activity less than 10,000 cubic yards is conditional use in nine, 10 and 11, which.
That page should land in the last.
Right, right. So, but then if you look right under that, you have filling grading or other earth moving activity more than 10,000 cubic yards, mineral extraction industrial.
This is where, this is where Matt is.
So obviously there's implication there to begin with that. I mean, obviously this is an industrial operation, so you've got to remember that. And this is 10,000 cubic yards, that would be all you'd be permitted on the whole property. So you're asking for two separate areas for 10,000, that's not permitted in the ordinance. You already have a permit for an existing gravel pit, so you wouldn't be able to apply for this as well. It would be one of the other.
We kind of talked about that a little bit at the beginning too.
This isn't, this, this 10,000, this sum, well, they don't have numbers next to them, but filling grading or other earth moving activity less than 10,000 cubic yards, conditional use in these zones is, is not intended for a mineral extraction industrial style like this. And if it wasn't being approved for that sort of style, it would be the only permit for that property. This is for the whole property, not for regions of the property.
So you're telling me that a 350 acre piece of land, if I got approved to put a little shack on here or something, I've got approval for any sort of thing, that that 10,000 yards a year would be thrown right out?
No, I don't think I'm talking about building at all.
Well, I don't, I don't think I.
I'm not talking about building, I'm just talking about mineral extraction here.
Is that how it's, is that the way you're interpreting it?
I don't have anything about building.
Filling?
Filling grading or other earth moving activity. It's just the verbiage of it. If these things under other uses had numbers next to them, I'd like to say number four or five, but that's what it says.
And I, we had talked about that before. I interpreted it as 10,000 yards per lot.
Yeah, per lot.
And I said, what you may have to do, because you have 3,000 feet of road, is divide the lot into a couple of lots.
True, you may have, yeah.
Which was.
Right now, we can't do it.
That would be, when I looked at it, I said, my same thought was it's 10,000 per lot, not per district. You may have to create this road, build it up to a road standard, which wouldn't take very much. There's your road frontage and divide that, now you have three lots, four lots, five lots, whatever, and then you'd be looking at 10,000 per lot.
Per lot, okay. I.
And separate that existing gravel pit on its own.
Right, right.
I mean, to use, to use the regulations in your favor.
It, we would do it if we had to do it, just.
Look, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the zoning ordinance says.
I don't interpret it that way though, and my engineers, when they read it, didn't interpret it that way either. And I've never had any feedback along that lines from the town.
Well, that's why I go to the planning board.
Yeah. Well, I was here last time and we sort of talked about this.
We did mention, I did mention it briefly last time.
Yeah. The way, am I missing something though? Because I'm looking at that chart and it says approval for other uses, right? And then it says filling grading or other activity less than 10,000 cubic yards. So it's just telling you whether those areas are permitted or, are permitted for conditional use. But where is the limitation that says that if there's another gravel pit approved on the same property, that that doesn't apply? I don't see that, that verbiage anywhere.
This is just a lame use chart, so it's not going to be right in the chart.
Okay.
But that, that is definitely what the chart is saying, I mean, it's not.
Just say it somewhere else.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't be approving two, two gravel pits, one is saying.
That's kind of where it's falling out. And again, tonight's not public hearing, it's just the first time.
Yeah, no, I just want to throw that out there because we keep, we're getting the 20,000 number.
Yeah.
For, for one, the only number we're dealing with is 10,000. So 20,000 is, we're not even dealing with that number.
No. Why, can I, can you just explain it to me?
Because it's one lot, it's two separate areas in the same lot, and you can have 50 areas in your lot, you can't take 10,000, you can't add each one.
It's two different areas that fall under different zones, they're not the same zones.
It's the same lot, it's just, I mean, it's one parcel.
But it's different, but it's different zones.
That, I have different zones on my property, I mean, it doesn't, that's how, you know, that happens.
And you can have different uses in, on your lot where you've got multiple zones. You can't do something on this lot, you can't do that, but I'd agree with you that you can't grab 10,000 for me and 10,000 for me and 10,000 for that.
Right, right, so, yeah, the 20,000.
But I think I would say the existing gravel pit would not really fall into play if you were looking at the 10,000 out there. But I think, as we talked before, I'm almost like you need to divide this lot to get more than 10,000. And then the aspect of the 10,000 yards, we're assuming that is in the ground, because when you take it out of the ground, you have the fluff factor.
Well, that's what he's saying, he's going to put in the truck and then haul it out to the other site to process it, so it's not 10,000 leaving the sites we're talking about in the, because after it gets, you've got your fluff piled up next to your 10,000 out in the other pit.
Yeah, it's 10,000.
So it's more than 10,000 left in the resource protection district, which is also not what this is talking about.
Yeah.
Because, because they're not talking about industrial mineral extraction when they're talking about this conditional use permit, it wasn't designed for that.
I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, by far.
But it, I understand, but it's, it's, it doesn't say that it, it wouldn't apply. It says 10,000 yards a year.
Well, I mean, yeah, 10,000 yards, that would be what would be in your truck going out to the other pit for you to screen, it wouldn't be.
No, so that would be.
You'd get 10,000 screening, then you'd have your pile of fluff to do whatever you wanted, but you'd only be able to bring 10,000 out, I mean, you, you know.
I would look at it as 10,000 removed from the earth by calculations of, you did an acre, you remove 6.5 feet, that was 10,000. Once you put it into the truck, it is 13,000, but once you ran it to the screener and you left rock behind, so, I mean, that's where it gets a little fuzzy.
Well, yeah, right, right.
Thank you. Well, it, what I'm gathering is that the 20,000 yards a year might be a push with, because it's one piece of land and I'm, I'm getting that. I would answer to that, that we, I'm going to continue with this path of getting approved for 10,000 yards a year at this current point in time and, because I want to move forward with this approval process. If I, it'll take time to split the land out, but we would end up doing that to get the rest of this material. That'll take time to survey and to build a road and do those other things, so for now, it appears that I'll approach the board looking for 10,000 yards a year for approval until I can go through that surveying process. I'll probably have to end up coming back to the board at a later date with this property subdivided to be able to get the rest of that material.
Divided, not subdivided.
Divided.
Subdivided, they'll be waiting for another application.
Yeah. It's, it's important for us to, to get this material because we, we did pay a lot of money for this land and when these laws changed, it really affected us a lot. So, you know, our, our need to get this material is pretty essential, so for now, if I have to go through the 10,000 yards a year, I'll certainly do that, if that's the interpretation. And I guess I would, I'd have to continue down the approval process with that in mind.
And like you were saying, you haven't, you haven't got approval from Saco River Corridor Commission yet, so we're not giving you any sort of.
Well, that's the only.
Inclusion on our part either, because we'd love to hear what they have to say.
Well, the only jurisdiction they have is within 500 feet of the Little Ospey River. Or, still, yeah.
Which is, that's 500 right there roughly.
Exactly, yeah.
And our ordinance, Little Ospey, Saco River says 500, our ordinance is 750. So there's a little conflict there where we give them more authority, but they're not going to be interested in that extra 250, I don't think.
Yes. And they control up to 1,000 feet where the floodplain is, is wider than 500 feet as well.
That's a question.
Yes?
How much gravel of material do you have left in the present, the proved pit?
That was 600, around 600,000 yards. We've probably taken, I want to say 50 to 100,000 yards out of there, so I think there's around probably 500,000 yards left there.
I think his point is valid. How many years do you need to extract over time?
So I mentioned that our concrete, for concrete, we use about 30,000 yards a year. We also have private aggregate sales that we do. And then we also, we have a precast concrete facility, which is, I have a precast, which probably uses another 10,000 yards a year, so.
He's going to have to subdivide it somehow.
When the concrete's doing well, we use about 100,000. What's approved right now is enough for us to run it for five years.
Okay, so would you have time to stop to, to break it up into lots?
I do have time, yeah.
It's not that a situation we got to do tomorrow morning, but you can take, you can do it, do it the right way, but the proper guy who's one of, that's all of that, I just wonder, would you want to put a situation where we're going to shut you down?
Yeah, no, 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 definitely not. Yeah, we do have plenty of time to, to do that, it's the path that we're going down.
This, this is on this application. The other application that he's going for is less than 10,000 cubic yards a year. That's my understanding. Maybe we should clarify that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Matt, the, just so we're clear on this, as, as you're wishing to leave it, I guess. Currently, there's an application, a valid application that is on file to commercially extract 10, in excess of 10,000 yards per year, right?
A conditional use permit, not an application.
Right, an existing permit.
Yeah.
And, and in conjunction with that, you would be seeking initially from the, the town, a, another permit, a conditional use permit to, to work, to remove less than 10,000 cubic yards.
Yes.
Okay.
Within our P shore landing in the last.
Right, right. So this permit, as, as I understand our ordinance, we have never raised any prohibition about those coexisting on the same lot. So I think that's a valid, you know, what you're trying to do there, I think, is within, within the, within the bounds of our ordinance, wouldn't you agree?
I don't personally agree with that, but I don't, I haven't got the verbiage in front of me, so I'm.
Day one, day one, so it'll take a while to.
Because I feel like it's, the intent is that it would be two separate lots, I mean, that's, but I don't have any physical written evidence.
Yeah, okay. Well, maybe we could do some more research on it and.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Look into it more. I'm not here to try to, to break the law or change the ordinances, I, you know, I've obviously got to do everything within the, within the law. So I thought I had a clear understanding on this, but apparently I need to kind of.
Well, we do too, it's a great, there's some great areas.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I would like to continue to keep the process moving though, if we can try to do a sit walk and still get the public hearing going.
Yeah, we've got the application, we'd have to just work on the abuddies list with you.
So that this was on the second round, I think that's what he's saying, which.
We've got the original fee, there's an additional fee for the abuddies list, we wouldn't have to notify them for the sit walk, but, you know, we want to do the sit walk before it's getting too dark, too early.
We've got a ton of scent, it weighs more than I know, it's getting dark.
I think your Google Earth maps tells.
I was, I was telling that to Bob, I said, there's more on that map than by going out there. But by going out there, you can really see the sensitive areas and get a good gist of why it's protected, why we want to make sure the buffer area is maintained and the, the property owners are as concerned, it seems, as anybody else, that the sensitive areas are maintained.
Yeah, you can see, we can take a ride out and check out the, the current gravel pit too, and you can just kind of see what's been developed out there so far and hopefully show you that we like to, we run it, you know, organized and fairly clean operation. You might see some trash out there from the kids going out there time to time, but.
Matt?
Yes.
At the start of that field trip, maybe could we look at Rudy's area there?
Yeah.
To see your reclamation.
Yeah, we should go take a look at that, that'd be a great idea.
I just think it might, I've, I've never seen that in its present state for quite a while.
But he is, he's got no affiliation really with you guys.
No, yeah. I just use that as an example because our Pepin and sons, my grandfather, owned the, owned that land and did a phenomenal job reclaiming that land and, you know, there's beautiful pine trees everywhere and we, I was trying to make the point that we still hold ourselves to the same standard that my grandfather did years ago, so. And we... I was trying to make the point that we still hold ourselves to the same standard that my grandfather did years ago, so...
I'd be curious to see it, just because I've always been intrigued by the notion that you can actually pull something like that back into, you know, production of viable timber, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's nice to see, if you can do it.
Pine trees grow fairly quickly, especially in those type of soils. They do pretty well.
Yeah. I was gonna be... Now, the two here, about 2.4, which is traffic, the truck traffic. And what I'm reading here, don't you think maybe that the road commission should take a look at that road is gonna bear that kind of traffic? The heavy weight of that traffic? They're talking about six axles trucks. That's a lot of weight for a road that's not even constructed by daily sand loads.
Are you referring to the road that they're gonna have going into the pit?
No, I'm talking about the H Road.
H Road itself?
They know it's gonna cross the tier that road to hell, I hope.
Talking about where his house is.
We've already repaid up from the 109 to the dump. We've repaid it three times in 10 years. And they're only putting heavy trucks like that over the quality, once you're gonna try to extract the containers from the dump. And it's going that kind of damage.
You're trying to do the right thing, and yeah.
You'd be looking at a lot of damage to that road with those heavy trucks. Ten meters, fine. There's three axles. They're talking six axles.
One axle's the better, isn't it?
Depending on how much you're... You've still got the damage that are going across that road, the vibration pounding.
So this is the third pit that's on that road, and it's always been a concern, the amount of traffic that goes by here. And I think, basically, you guys are just running triaxles, right?
Yeah, we normally run just triaxles, give it three triaxles that...
You know, maybe we should limit it to three. You think, you know, you get six axles. And if you're even a son of a gun to drive a truck with three or four axles.
Yeah.
It's a son of a gun to turn the son of a gun, because you've got three fixed axles and one turning axle.
Well, keep it in mind. Remember, this is just the beginning, so let's...
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, traffic's definitely a big one to go with.
I'm not concerned with how many trucks will walk. I'm concerned with whether the truck...
Would it be any different volume of trucks than you would currently use with any of your existing conditional use?
No, I was gonna say that. I'd like to look at what my current situation says. I don't... I think I'm pretty close, actually, to what we had originally been permitted for. I might be a few trucks over. But I guess I'll have to look more closely at what we were...
Everything I was looking at, as soon as I saw four to six axles, I got kind of concerned. That's a lot of damn weight.
Four to six axles?
That's what I was saying, four to six axles.
Wow, how's that worded? Four... Oh, okay, four to six triaxle trucks, yeah, and two to four trailer dumps hauling about six to eight loads a day. Six to eight each? Yes. So that'd be a maximum of six triaxles hauling eight trips. And four trailers hauling eight trips, which I could never see that happening unless there was like a...
The only one concerned was the trail ones.
The trailers, those concerns.
Those were the most concerning.
Okay.
That is similar weight. There was a triaxle that's stretched out a little more times. It wouldn't be...
It's not just the script of the weight. You're gonna have vibration pounding over a greater area of pavement. So now, when you take in the spring of the year, and the road is soft, and you start liquefying to the underground, under the pavement, because you're pounding on it.
Yeah.
Next thing you know, you've got puddles. If it's puddles, you have no road.
But you get the cracking.
Yeah, well, yeah, but the cracking leads to puddles.
Yeah.
And we had problems with that when our trucks going up and picking up the containers. Which, you know, which is... Those are triaxle trucks. It's just... There's two axles in there, and one axle up front. So you actually look at a 10-wheel truck.
Yeah.
Well, you take a dump truck, you'll have three. With a trailer, you'll have the 10-wheel up front, and you're gonna have six more, three more axles out back.
Yes.
And the truck is gonna be 40 feet long to tame it 40 feet long.
Well, maybe I could look at the initial distribution of the weight, because the idea is that those additional axes are supposed to...
Distribute the weight.
Yeah.
But it doesn't disperse the bouncing of the truck back and forth over frost eaves and whatnot. Which, if this road was not built like your highway on 109, this thing was paint-dolled, who the hell knows what, over a period of 100 years.
Yeah.
And you start using that kind of weight, you know, it costs a ton of water money to keep repairing the road.
Let's get to that. And we've got, like I said, we've got plenty of time before we can deal with, you know, the road deal and things like that. But are we interested in setting up a time to go out there? And if we are, can we come up with a date that might be appropriate? Anybody have an interest in going to see it? Is that a song that's saying no?
Oh, I've been out there a few times. Oh, it scratches on my cover.
Yes, no?
How would we physically get in there? I mean...
Shout out the logging road that's out there. I was able to drive over my vehicle fairly easy. Something a little smaller would be a little better. And that gets you to within 400 feet or so of the river?
Yeah.
So I mean, it was a reasonable walk.
Yeah. There's... I've got a truck, and if we had a few trucks, I think we could get back there. You need like an SUV or a truck to drive all the way back there, otherwise you could... You'd have to walk, and it'd be like a two-mile walk, but...
Okay, you want to avoid hunting season.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna do it, we need to be on it.
So if we're going on a sidewalk, we're going through the permitting process. Do we have a clear understanding of what the application is? I mean, are we just looking at the scope of the project?
I would look at the scope.
Because we don't have a very... I mean, you know, usually when you go on a conditional use... When you go through the conditional use process, which includes a sidewalk, you have a pretty fair understanding of the intent of the whole project. Whereas the scope is a little bit...
Well, I think the only thing we're...
So maybe we're just going to check it out and see everything that's out there, or...
The only thing that we're missing right now is the 10,000 or 20,000 yards a year, right? It's the only thing we're missing from the scope.
Well, there's still some gray area as to whether or not you can operate two separate... I mean, I'm not...
Yeah.
The only way I see is... The only way I actually see it, and kind of talked about that as a little, is there's gonna be three or four lines drawn on the map. There's gonna be four different lots.
I mean, should we really wait for that to happen in order to...
I think we wait for that to happen. There'll be in hunting season. It'll be foliage after the foliage drop would be a better time, too. But I'd avoid the hunting season aspect of it.
Not on Sunday.
Not on Sunday.
I personally don't want to wait to subdivide the lot. If I have to, if it's everyone's interpretation, once we look at this more closely, that it's only 10,000 yards a year, then I'm gonna push to get that approved. Because it's important for me to get this approved sooner than later, especially considering our deal with the land trust. So whether or not it's 20 or if it's 10, I'm still gonna... I still want to get this approved.
But I think Gavin Stark and you have an existing operation. Can you get another 10,000 with that existing operation? I think you need to divide the land.
Yeah.
Which is fairly easy.
Oh, for that, okay. So I would need to divide the land to get the 10,000 yards a year.
And if you're gonna divide, you might as well divide it into three or four to get what you're really looking for.
What I'm really looking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be subdivision, providing it's gifted to blood relatives.
What's that?
You own one, your father owns one, you know.
Oh, it can't be owned by the same owner?
That would be subdivision.
Oh, you can't subdivide it out of the same ownership?
No.
Oh, boy. Well, that's interesting.
So we can kick that around a little bit, too. I mean, you can subdivide it.
I'm just not... I've had my engineers read through all this, and I'm just not picking up where you can't have a gravel pit and also be able to get the 10,000 yards a year at the same time. I mean, maybe the language is there, but it just seems crazy to me because it's 350 acres.
It's an assumption, Matt, that's not clearly spelled out in the ordinance, I think.
Okay.
I mean, that...
Yeah, I mean, there isn't clear language in either direction. I mean, if we found it in either direction, that would mean all we needed. I haven't taken the time to thoroughly look for it.
I'm very intent on understanding what's going on with this. So I'm gonna try to work with you guys to...
Yeah, maybe your boys saw it, and help them highlight it and read it.
Okay. So if I come up with some information and kind of get it back to you guys and kind of hash it out a little bit, yeah.
What it would come down to is the interpretation of whether or not you can indeed run a current permit as you... There's no question that you can do that, but at the same time, on the same lot, can you get a permit to remove less than 10,000 cubic yards in another segment of the same lot? I mean, isn't that the question that's before us here?
Yes. Yeah.
Right?
So that's the first question. Then I guess the second question was, would be if that is allowable, whether it's allowable to get 10,000 from each separate area.
No, I think that's where we're fetching up. I don't...
I don't see that in there.
I don't see that that would be possible, but the more reasonable question in my mind would be whether you can do the two different thresholds of operation, we'll call it. Less than or more than 10,000, which is currently active and you're pursuing. But can you pull another permit for the same lot to... In a different area to remove less than 10,000 cubic yards?
I would say no on that one.
I would tend to...
So you're saying to have an active gravel pit and also get approved for the 10,000 yards, you don't think that's feasible?
No, I think that is more feasible than 10,000 out of RP, 10,000 out of shoreline, 10,000 out of Little Ospe at the same year, so 30,000 a year off the one site. That I think it's clearly 10,000 yards per lot in the Resource Protection and shoreline zone in Little Ospe combined.
Okay. Well, so we're gonna have to start hashing this out.
But we... I mean, we could maybe with the... With some kind of assurance from you that there would be a division in the works that would enable those two levels, thresholds of activity to occur simultaneously. I guess we could proceed somehow, rather, with Kenny's green light on it, a flashing yellow light or whatever, however we get to work with, yeah.
And you're gonna be late at all.
Dark out, yeah.
I could... So an option would be to put a proposal for subdividing the land on the print, and then a proposal for doing whatever required roadwork needs to be done. And then getting an approval through the town based on an assurance that I would go out there and have this all surveyed and that, you know, I guess it'd have to be an assurance that all this is gonna be done. I could go through the planning board now and put an assurance together rather than waiting and going through later. Is that what you're kind of saying, or...
Well, a lot of this is more up to Ken in terms of procedural issues, but whatever he feels comfortable with. But I don't know, would it be helpful to get a consensus of the board as to whether we do indeed, in the majority, feel that those two activities cannot be conducted in tandem on the same lot?
We can take a straw poll.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm not even comfortable making a decision until I go back and look at things.
We can at least try to find some type of verbiage that we need.
Okay.
Man, if you feel confident it's not in the...
I don't think it is. I don't think that is clear.
Personally, don't. I...
It's something we've never run into before, so we've never inquired about.
Yeah, I just, when I'm looking at it, that's what I feel like it means. So that's what I would... I would say we shouldn't vote on it tonight because we're such in the early stages of this thing. We should just keep hashing it out. There's no rush on the project. You've got five years of gravel in the initial pit.
Yeah.
Well, the only rush is the three... Is there the deal with the land trust for us to deal with?
The planning board is just looking at the land.
I'm not trying to rush you guys, but I'm just saying, there is incentive for me to get the approval before a five-year period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is my sense that we go forward with at least taking a look, or we want to hold off and then take a look at some other point?
Okay, setting up a sidewalk. They were there. We've kind of got it out of the way. We know that they're going to proceed. It's not like we're gonna want to see everything ribboned for what things are, really, just to take a walk and get a gist of it, so when we get to public hearings, if we make it that far, that you guys have been out and you've got a good idea.
Even what, if we just do do a sidewalk, I think you should indicate which area you plan to extract the 10,000 yards out of first, so they can communicate that to us, because we're not gonna look, I don't know, look at five different areas and then try to remember those and...
Okay.
Because you're gonna, you know, you're not gonna be... You're not gonna be opening up multiple areas in the back of everyone. So whichever one you plan to go with first, as long as you've got that kind of... That would be a good thing for us to be able to see.
The first area would be this green area right here.
The closest to one above the gray.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And with the quantities, we came up with, I think that it would take about 10 years to get the material out of there.
Yeah. So we may not need to look at the whole lot.
The second area would be the other green piece that you see north of there. And I think that I have another 15 years. So that's with the... So you're looking at 25. It's fair, I'm not gonna be out there for another five years. You're looking at 30 years before I even touch anything in the north in the river.
The Little Ospe.
Right, well, that's what that's... I kind of indicated the other meeting. I almost felt like it's kind of strange that we would approve five separate areas. It's gonna take 100 years to get to them all, and maybe we should just be looking at the first area and considering that. But as long as it's indicated when we go out there, I'm happy.
Well, I think, not to speak for the Pepins, but they had a permit for one little small area in their lot. Two years later, 100 and something acres is no longer any good that they can't touch. So I can see why they would want to secure the permits under the current zoning to make sure that they know what their game plan is for their industry, anyway. So I understand why they'd want to secure permits, even though it may take them 30 years to get to it.
I mean, it was... We kind of learned it the tough way around last time, and that's why we're trying to get it approved this time, is just in case something changes again, you know?
And the only way you really picked up on it is they came in to talk about the road. They wanted to fix the road up a little bit, and after we got there, there was a lot more resource protection today than there was two years ago out there.
Yeah.
Five years ago.
Yeah.
Can we...
We were...
Can we con... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Can we consider Saturday after next at all in the morning? What would that be, 17th, 24th?
I can't do that.
It's tricky, that.
It's what?
24th, maybe I can do it. I can do it.
The first... That's our Democratic winner, isn't it?
No, it's a 17th.
Because we'd have to post it as a planning board.
Extra meaning.
Extra meaning to a couple, which may be...
Maybe the week after that.
Just a week is fine.
It's just a week for the...
Yeah.
We don't need to notify others for the sidewalk.
No.
It would be for the public hearing.
First Saturday in October?
Kenny, is there any sunset on the river?
Yes.
The conditional use permit, as long as the activity was being used.
They can take as much as they need.
That's a... I can't do that morning again.
So you mean, you can take today and...
For the turkeys.
They'll be still working on the site, so I'm sure they'll keep...
As long as they take a portion out of each one, so it stays alive.
You have to stop.
When does the hunting season start?
We can dress up.
Oh, yeah.
If you dress up as an... It's okay.
I think in the first?
First of October? Anybody?
Yeah.
It's a Saturday morning.
Saturday morning? Or is it afternoon better?
Make it too late in the afternoon October, so we get the doc on Friday morning.
I was gonna say, I think October is about the latest you're gonna be out there.
Do we go back and... What's the earliest we can start during the week?
I know we were all just kind of yelling how hard I'm getting there before 6 o'clock, right? So that was kind of restricted us both, first time here tonight. We can do that if it works for everyone. I don't have a problem starting on Saturday, but we can do it.
Is that we can do Tuesdays, then 4:00, 4:30?
Are you talking...
I think it works for everyone, we might do it. October 1st, what time?
I don't, I don't know, I, you know, I'm, I'm good anytime.
9:00?
Yeah, that's true.
9:00 at Town Hall, and you walk on the way up there, it'll drive.
Can we see Rudy's that same day?
Have a check with him and see if he's...
Yeah, I'll turn to Rudy if we can.
He says it's about a two-mile walk.
Uh, yeah.
About that field.
But you don't, you don't think we can...
I could get my, brother's got us one of those side-by-sides, I could get that out there.
I have good lung problems, and I can't make that walk.
What in reality are we going to see?
I can't go by the pictures anyway.
I could really get an ATV out there.
It's not about that.
Matt, are you saying that we are going to go from here to the first potential extraction, and then the second one, or are you talking about the two miles being from here out here?
The two miles would be if you walked from here all the way back to the, to the back here.
So the road's coming in here, typically, we're going to go here to see the existing pit.
And we can drive there, no problem, yeah.
Okay, so then the turn here is the one that's sketchy, is that what you mean?
Yeah, and you can, you can drive, like, if you're, if you've got an SUV or a truck, you can drive like about this far, and then you kind of want to walk the rest, so, and it's probably about a mile from here to the back, that's it.
We don't really have to see that.
Right, we don't have to get back there, I don't think, do we?
Yeah.
No, we just need to see the existing pit, the road and the access, I'd like to see the neighbor's access, if it's convenient, just for reference.
And the neighbor comes in?
Because the DEP said they have preference, they use that other access if possible, so down the line, 10 years from now, if there's a change of ownership, we should consider that access again.
It'd be tough to get to that at this point, because it's way up in this corner.
Well, it's a good, I mean, it's a sample we should see.
You'd be prepared to walk them.
I could walk.
You're already, I could have walked it, too.
All right, so we're set, we're going to, we're going to meet at the Town Hall, 9:00 October 1st, and then we'll go from there. We'll do, we'll go to the, we'll go to this pit on H Road first, and then if we can work it out, we'll try the other one, take a look at the reclamation project at the end?
Yeah.
And if not, I mean, that's just a quick look.
Rudy has one part of his pit that's open, he's kind of functioning in, but the part where he, where he physically lives now, where his house is, is where our former gravel pit was. So that's where I could buzz into his house, and I could show you the sloping, and I could show you the pine trees and all that.
Okay, right. That, good for what you want to look?
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments about that part? All right, any other questions about anything else at this stage in time, anyway? Obviously, we have a lot of work to do. I mean, this material is an explanation, step by step, of what you guys expect to do?
Yes.
So I think that's something that we need to take a look at, you know?
Not a lot has changed in there from our former approval, as far as hours of operation, truck traffic, processing equipment, there's nothing in there that's drastically different from the first approval.
I think, though, all of us are new, maybe with the exception of Tom, from the first time you guys came through, I don't remember.
Oh, right.
Oh, maybe Yolli, I'm sorry.
2008 or '09, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's where, so it's new people, mostly new people.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Matt? All right, Matt, any questions you haven't had before you?
I think I'll definitely have questions, but we're going to have to kind of sort through some things, figure it out, so...
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys, I appreciate it.